All right. Well, good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to this meeting of the Lakota Board of Education. Jenny, would you please call roll?
This is Casper here.
Mrs. O'Connor here.
Mr. Parnell.
Here.
This is Schaefer.
Here.
Mr. Level.
Here. At this time, we'll do the pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. All right. Next up, we're going to approve the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Okay, discussion. All right. Jenny, please call roll.
This is Schaefer.
Yes.
This is O'Connor.
Yes.
This is Casper.
Yes.
Mr. Parnell.
Yes.
Mr. Level.
Yes. All right, moving on to the next section, comments, starting with myself. So I typically, I really honestly never have too much to say during board president comments. Typically, if I do, I'm not a written statement kind of guy. I kind of like to wing it, but I was doing a lot of reflecting, and I know a lot of us have been. And there's been a lot going on in the country, a lot going on. You know, if you stop back and you reflect just between COVID and the equity tensions that we have that exist right now. And so I just put together a statement just on my behalf, doesn't represent board thoughts and feelings that I thought I would read, and then open up comment if other board members would like to address that. So I wanted to take a moment and recognize the extraordinary events happening right now across our nation and our very own community regarding equity for our fellow African-American neighbors, friends, students, and community members. You know, as I reflect on this movement, I am proud to see so many of our students and families directly engage in the conversation of race equity and systemic racism that continues to plague our nation and communities. We have seen our community step up and engage in peaceful protest, host conversations around race, and show support through meaningful interactions. However, this reflection is also personal to myself. As an elected member of this board, I have a duty to represent every student and family in our community. And in fact, this includes nearly 30% of African-American and students of color who attend our schools. It's my responsibility to not just show support through words and policy, but to do better and be better each and every day. Mr. Miller recently wrote a letter to our community, and in this letter, he stated, quote, "This type of tragedy," referencing George Floyd, "will undoubtedly be repeated unless we truly insist upon racial equity and unless we call out racism in all of its hateful forms on our streets, in our schools, and in our own homes. I hope that this is something the entire Lakota community, our students, staff, and community can commit to taking on with me as we continue striving to be a model for what's right," end quote. I recognize that words without action are meaningless, and I personally look forward to walking this journey with Mr. Miller, his team, teachers, staff, community, and my fellow board members to be better. You know, I think a lot of what we're seeing right now, again, is just generational. It's happened over and over and over again, and I think that, you know, it's easy for us, again, to post a black square on our Facebook profile or to do these heartfelt moments. And again, I think that words are important, but I think actions are even more important. And so, you know, I just wanted to make a statement from myself that, Mr. Miller, you know, I read what you had written, and I think that we, as a board personally, can do more, right? And so I don't know what that looks like right now, but to your statement that you wrote, I'm personally willing to walk that journey with you as we talk about equity within our district and the impact that it has on our students, especially the 30% that are African-American and students of color. If anybody else has anything that they would like to add or have a discussion around?
Very well said, Brad. That's very nice of you to like write that down and recite it. You are not a read from the paper kind of guy. You did a well job. I would like to all second that. I was very impressed with you going out there, writing the statement. I think it's important for us to not just talk the talk, but to walk the walk. And I am happy to walk alongside you to do that. To both of you, great job.
Thank you again for your leadership. I think, again, we all, it's hard to know what to do and what the next steps need to be at this point and how we should move forward. But I look forward to continuing that dialogue and finding out the best way to support all of our students, staff, and community members and as we move forward.
Okay.
And you know, I mean, to your point, there's no easy answers, right? And it's not quick fixes, but it's listening, it's reflecting, it's got a lot of input from some members of our community, people of color, students as well, just some of the things that they've experienced and some things I knew about, some things I didn't know about. So I mean, it's an opportunity for us to get better as a community, not just a school district.
Yeah, I mean, I think that was part of my reflection as I was thinking about the school system and, again, me personally. You know, we have done a phenomenal job of connecting with our community through the community conversations and things like that. And so I think you're right. It starts with listening, and a lot of times, action doesn't occur immediately, but it's listening and being empathetic. I also, I also, you know, am proud of the work that we've done. You know, we've got our Lodi Office of Diversity and Inclusion. And so I know that they're only, what, a year and a half? Is it two years now? Two years out? A year out?
The Champions have been around for, I think, six years, so it predated me. But Lodi, yeah, almost two years, I think, now.
So we've taken steps.
I've talked to Asia several times since everything came up and different families going through different things. So we're 24/7, 365.
Yep. Thank you.
I would like to say something, Brad. I did not expect that statement from you tonight, so I don't have prepared comments. This isn't a new issue for the district, nor are many of the processes that we've put in place to try to be responsive and to try to listen. And personally, that's where I'm at. I'm in listening mode, trying to learn more, but listening at this point in time. So on a personal level, I'm not going to make a statement, but I do believe the district has put many things into place. It continues to be an issue to make sure that we're providing equity, not just on race issues, but across the board on many different issues. And we've done diversity councils, we've put Lodi into place, we've changed policies, many policies in the time that I've been here. And I think there's good work going on. I don't think it's work that's ever finished, and I do think we need to be responsive. And so I appreciate that we're having conversations. I do want to be sure that we know that we're speaking individually as board members and not for the entire board.
Yeah, and I made that statement prior to my speaking. Yep. Okay, Matt?
If we could, would it be okay, we lost one of our staff members just a week or so ago, Judy Buckenmire from Lakota East. So if we could just do a moment of silence, if that's okay with the board and her memory. And she was a teacher for us for 19 years, and she's just one of those people that everybody loved her and she loved everybody. And that's just a great testament to her. And so our thoughts and prayers are with her family and for the East family as well, so.
Thank you.
Jenny?
So my comments, honestly, we continue to look at, you know, there is a lot going on and a lot of need in our community, a lot of things that are happening. You know, one has already been mentioned, we still have a pandemic going on as well. It's June, we're trying to close the fiscal year this month and doing that with a lot of remote work. I'm proud of the work that is happening there, as well as being very sensitive to the financial needs of some folks who have reached out to us as well within our community. So we continue to work on those efforts.
Okay, great, thank you. This brings us to our first public comment section on the agenda. This is for comments related to items that are directly on the agenda. Mrs. Logan, do we have any public comments?
We do. We had one that was sent to us via email from Julie O'Callahan, 6240 Winding Creek Boulevard, Liberty Township, Ohio. She poses two questions to us, the first being, will there be freshman busing for the 2020-21 school year? And the second question, we know there are education cuts from the state of Ohio. Have you heard anything regarding federal funds? For example, funds that support title reading slash math and free and reduced lunch. Will these programs still be supported? Thank you, Julie O'Callahan.
Okay, do we have any public comments via Zoom? No? All right. In regards to freshman busing, that was board approved, gosh, back in the fall, right? No, it was in the fall before December, if I'm not mistaken. Am I right about that? So that's been approved, so we're marching towards that. In fact, I actually drove by the service center the other day and saw all the fleet of the new buses sitting in the parking lot. I'm assuming it was new buses. They were extremely shiny and not in the lot. So unless there's conversation by the board that would alter that, which there hasn't been, we're moving forward with that. And Jenny, do you have anything to speak about the federal funding?
Can I, real quick, on the busing issue, I have an asterisk that I'll mention later.
Sure.
Yeah. As far as cuts to funding, we're still waiting. I will say that the state of Ohio, on the 10th of every month, there's usually a report that's sent out looking back at the previous month. So by the 10th of June, we should see a report showing what did May look like for the state of Ohio. So we should hear more after the governor reviews that on what next year should look like. As far as federal funds, we've heard nothing about cuts towards title programs or our free and reduced lunch and breakfast program as well. I can't speak for everyone, but I believe that, you know, we, the title funds that we have, we're counting on those. If something would be cut, then we would address it at that time. But I've had no indication from any of the information I have that we're going to be looking at any cuts to any of those programs. It's really just been on the state level that we've heard.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to board reports, we'll start with Butler Tech.
Butler Tech is doing largely what we're doing as far as keeping track of everything that's happening at the legislative level. Right now, they've been held harmless, as we discussed last time. They are looking at doing the multi-pronged approaches we are, and they are expecting to make that announcement a little later than we are as to what they're planning to do when they open schools. They also did just have their drive-through graduation ceremony, and they still do have a date that they're holding at Centos for graduation, so.
Early August, probably.
Yeah, it's, yeah. So I'm doing lots of planning and lots of different contingencies right now at Butler Tech, just like Lakota.
Thank you. Any questions for Julie? All right, legislative?
Matt, would you like to kick us off?
Sure. Probably on the legislative side, I would draw your attention to Senate Bill 319, which is Matt Huffman's bill. Couple of the highlights out of there, and I can send this to everybody after the meeting. But some of the highlights would be to permit high school students to use the final course grades in lieu of the corresponding and of course exams. If that exam was not administered in 1920, which it wasn't because of the COVID-19 issues that we're all dealing with. They would also, 319 would also modify teacher and principal evaluations for this coming school year. There would also be, provide temporary furlough authority to school districts, which is not part of the statute now. Cut scores for the third grade reading guarantee would stay the same for this coming year as what it was last year. Exempt districts from the requirements to implement reading and improvement monitoring plans for the 2021 school year based on test results from 1920. I'm trying to just give the highlights. One of the things I thought this was a pretty good idea, too, is require ODE to develop an online 30-day training program to satisfy the classroom portion for school bus driver certification for 2021 school year. A couple of things that, at least my organization, BASSA, would like to also add to that, that's not in there now, would be to establish the whole harmless provision related to the report cards and results because of what happened this past spring. And then give school districts the flexibility to decide locally whether or not to grant the use of their buildings to outside groups. So we've had some groups that have wanted to come in. We said no because governor's order said through June 30th. There's also obviously cleaning and things we would have to do because of that. And that's about it. I don't know if, when there, or Jenny, you had more on 319 or anything else, but that seems to be the biggest one. We're still waiting on word on reopening, and I'll talk about that in a minute from Governor Dewine's office and with, also from ODE.
I'll address 319 in a minute. Thanks, Matt.
Yeah, that's exactly the legislative news that I'm aware of. Like you said, we're still waiting on a lot of more information. We still have lots of questions around fall and things like that, but that's what we know right now.
That's the same legislation information that I have. We all get that, so you don't have to forward that to us, Matt. We all get that. We all get Will Schwartz's email. The only thing that I would add is that they're having testimony tomorrow to try to get some of these things that are not in the bill into the bill. The only other thing I had is that last week's town hall, OSBA Town Hall, was someone from the ODE talking about school opening and some of the health and safety things. It was a whole hour presentation. Some of the things to take away is just the collab, they want collaboration with local health departments, superintendents, union principals, which I'm sure we're already doing, that there's no formal board action required to start school, that, you know, you're just going to, and they're trying to tell you that most, what they want you mostly do is to work with your health department and your buildings, so. But again, still waiting on official word. They think, like, by the 20th, they said last week, that by the 20th, they expect to hear some sort of official word. That was last week, so I don't know how much that's changed. That was just their estimate.
Considering when school is supposed to open, that's, that's considering when school is supposed to open, that's pretty short.
I think we're like 68 days from the start of school.
Yeah, I thought that was, they were hoping to get earlier, but that was the last that they had heard. But that was last Wednesday, so who knows what's changed since then.
Yep.
So if I follow up on some of those issues, that was Dr. John Richards from ODE. And he stressed local control a lot, but to be perfectly blunt, what I saw that we would have local control over was basically the date that we would start school. I don't really see a lot of local control other than that. He did say several times that it will be public health directives that will guide the reopening for districts.
And that that could vary.
Yeah. Which could continue to change right up until school starts.
County to county.
On Senate Bill 19, that was a great summation, Matt. The only thing I would add is that they've still not addressed the voucher issue for next year and hoping that we'll see something in this bill or in some type of legislation that addresses that, since we know that was only through this past school year, that that was deferred. There's another bill, Senate Bill 320, also introduced by Senator Huffman in the Senate. And he has enough co-sponsors to pass this bill, and that bill specifically will prohibit other public officials from closing schools. That includes the governor and the state health director. And they do have, as I said, enough legislators to pass that bill, so I'm expecting that to come forward sometime soon. There is an Ohio State Board of Education meeting tomorrow, and they will, they've received a lot of parent and administrator input in terms of reopening schools, so it'll be interesting to see what comes out of that meeting.
Can, I'm just asking because I don't know, can 320 be vetoed by the governor?
Yes, I think it can.
I'm not sure where that will go at this point.
That's why I'm asking. I'm not sure either.
Yes, it can.
It can be, but that.
Depends that they have enough votes to override the veto.
Right.
Wasn't sure if.
It can be vetoed, they just.
I think there's a feeling that they have enough support to handle it. So we'll see. We live in interesting times.
So I think that's a really good point, because most of the emails that we're receiving, or I've been copying the board on, a lot of the community that is expressing their concern about reopening or wanting us to reopen fully, I think it's important for our community to understand that we're beholden to the government and the mandates that they set and what we do. We can't just go rogue and start saying, yeah, we're sending everybody back, it's going to be normal. We're going to have to follow the local health department. So whatever the legislative decides is the mandate that we're given as a district. So we love getting the feedback. I love reading it. I mean, there are great ideas that people are presenting in these emails, but when it comes to the rubber meets the road is how we look at going back to school next year. We're a public school system, beholden to legislative action.
I completely disagree with you.
Okay, go ahead and explain.
Local control is local control, and we can't go rogue, and I'm not going to use any foul language.
We appreciate that.
Do an FCC violation.
Well, I think we represent 17,000.
That's a joke.
Todd, we represent 17,000 students, who many of them watch these broadcasts. So appropriate language is kind of a minimum that I think we should expect out of elected order.
I just, I wasn't going to.
I get that, but then you start to attack us based on comments that were previously made, so you can continue.
Well, someone should have talked to me instead of talking to other people about me. So it's no secret this board is.
Todd, you can continue.
Not cohesive. So, but my feeling is local control is local control.
We do receive state and federal dollars. So if we're willing to give our state and federal dollars, then those are a lot different decisions that can be made by this board, but I don't see that happening.
But we need to listen to the people who live here.
100% agree.
Thank you.
100% agree. I just hope that we don't send false, some type of false sentiment out there that we control the opening and how we open, when in reality, we, at this point, do not, unless the state legislative says you have full authority to determine how you open, and that hasn't been the case yet.
I do believe it's a board role, and I understand what you're saying, Brad, but I do believe it's a board role to advocate for direction and to be a conduit for information and feedback from our community to the state level.
Sure.
And so I don't necessarily agree with what comes across to me as a perception of we just need to sit here and not advocate for a particular course of action, whether it's this or any other course of action. We do have a voice at the state level.
Absolutely do.
In many different organizations, and I think that voice needs to be used. I agree with Todd in terms of the concept of local control. And if we're not telling our state government, our state organizations, the feedback that we're getting from our community, then we are abdicating our role as community representatives on the board. So I feel really strongly about that.
I don't, I agree. I think local control is extremely important. Matt, do you feel like our voice from our community is being heard at the state level? I know you sit on multiple committees. Jenny, you're on multiple committees as well.
Just all the way around the room, pretty much. I think we all are advocating at the state and sometimes national level, too.
Can I ask another question?
Sure.
I saw two articles regarding the reduction in funding. And I know in our five-year forecast, we, I think, we factored in a 10% reduction next year. I heard it could be as high as 23%. I want to know if anything's being done about the fact that charter schools were cut one-third of what we were cut. Is that true, and are we doing anything about it?
So they did receive a cut. It was less, if you look at, you know, what we received. The information that we got back was, well, they don't have local dollars. I'm just stating what the argument was that was sent to us. They don't receive local dollars, so their cut is less. We do not agree with that. I know all the calls that I've been on, and Matt and I are on some of those calls together, we've expressed that. There is, there's a loud sentiment from everyone in the public education realm that we would like to see that more equalized when you look at the charter schools. Additionally, there is a movement to look at how that cut was distributed. It was equalized, which means that if you were in a district that was more economically disadvantaged, then the cut was less than if you're in a district that is less economically disadvantaged. So there is a movement, I don't know whether that's going to go anywhere, to kind of redistribute that cut that we've already received. So there's a lot of discussion about how these cuts are being implemented. Just not sure if there's an appetite in Columbus to do changes on that.
Well, because also those districts that got the greatest cut also got the least relief from the CARES Act, correct?
Correct, because if you look at how the CARES funds were distributed, it was along the lines of Title I funds. And the way that you receive Title I funds is based on economically disadvantaged youth in your district. So for a lot of the districts, there's been an expression of it was a double whammy, if you will. I do think, though, that we've got to be sensitive to, is it the right time for wealthier districts to be trying to take more funds redistribute? And that's not what our organization, the Alliance, is trying to do. They're trying to say, the cuts that were distributed to the less affluent areas, keep that cut there, but find some additional funds to give other districts more relief, so.
Jenny, does, I saw a document at one point that it had all the districts in the state of Ohio, and it was ranked based on cash balance. Were decisions made based on the amount of money the districts had in their cash balance or the reserve?
It was not, but it was a, it was a piece of data that they used. And even though the cuts were not based on cash balance, I think it was a message that that was on the spreadsheet that went to all of us.
Yeah, I thought it was interesting, because it was a separate email. I don't remember even where I saw it. And I thought, that's kind of interesting that they put that out there and then actually had it sorted and ranked so you could see. And of course, we were at the extreme top of that. So I didn't know if that would be something that we, it could be, we could be held, I don't know, liable because of our healthy cash balance?
I will tell you that I've been in some conversations where future cuts, even this last cut, it was something that was part of the conversation, should it be considered? In the end, it wasn't. There's no guarantees that that won't be part of the consideration for future cuts.
Okay.
But I do think it was a message that it was on the spreadsheet, because that's not been on there before.
If that become, excuse me, if that becomes an issue, Jenny, I absolutely think our community could provide input about whether or not they think fiscal responsibility should be held against a district.
Right.
That's ridiculous.
I agree.
And I find it disheartening, don't hold me to the exact numbers, but I believe that out of the shortfall that Governor Dewine was seeing at the state, $700 million, 350 million of that came out of cuts to education. That does not tell me priority is on education.
Well, nearly 100 was on secondary education or colleges in addition to that. That was just the K-12, and then.
Yeah.
So yeah, 400,000 almost, just out of education, out of seven.
It was more than. If you look at the state's budget and you look at the percentage of that budget that's attributed to K-12, the cut was more than the piece of the budget that we received. So we definitely took the biggest hit with that cut.
And I think we need to be prepared for that for next year. I mean, Todd's talking about 23%. I don't think that's ridiculous to expect that. I've heard 25%. And I know we've started the process of internally talking about tightening our belt, but I think that's got to be a bigger conversation than we've had so far.
Yeah, it'll be nice when we know more about exactly what we're looking at. And I'm really hopeful that after the 10th, and the governor sees what the data looked like for May, that some more decisions can be made. But I think he's been kind of focused in on. But I think he's been kind of focused in on what's fall going to look like. And so his, his areas of priorities have kind of shifted over there for a minute.
And it seems like he's pausing on a lot of stuff because of the national issue going on too.
Yeah.
Well, we also saw a really strong jobs report. We also saw the stock market bounce back. So I think there are also some positives on the other side of that. So I think that, you know, while I do believe it'll be more than 10%, I mean, I have no idea really, but I do believe it'll probably be more than 10%. I think to your point, until we actually have the information to react. And we don't want to react at the last minute, but we also don't want to react prematurely as well.
Right. Well, and the other thing about our budgeting process for us is to remember that at the June 29th board meeting, I will ask you to approve temporary appropriations for fiscal year 2021. You will finalize those in the month of September. So we will know more by the time we finalize appropriations for 2021 now. There, you know, once you start moving down the line, it's a little hard to pull things back. But that's what our process is and it allows us to, to reflect and continue our planning and continue to be agile and to move as we know more information.
And I have to disagree. I think it's, it is not premature to begin having those conversations now. Our community, our families are going through the exact same.
I'm not saying it's, it's premature. We've already started. We've been having those conversations since March. Budgets that have come in from each one of the buildings are coming back with a 20% reduction. We are looking at classroom supplies and materials for next year. And is it appropriate to be charging for consumable supplies like we have in the past? So we have come together to look at that. It is part of our ongoing daily conversations. So if, if I said the wrong thing and was misunderstood there, I want to make sure I'm clear. It is part of our daily conversations, but as we know more, we'll, we'll adjust it. But absolutely, we're, we are tightening the belt. We are taking actions towards that.
Jenny, could you provide us at the next meeting a summary of some of those belt tightening processes that we're going through?
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? All right, moving on to administrative report, the first item that we have is the school calendar first read.
Thank you, Mr. Lovell. Just a couple bullet points on that. That's really not different than what we've been doing the last few years. So I want to make that clear right, right ahead or straight ahead. This is for the 2021, 2022 school year. So the one that is for this upcoming school year was already approved back in June of 2019. This would be for the following year. This is all part of House Bill 59. There's a requirement for the board to have a first read of the school calendar. And then we make it available to the public for comment for 30 days on the website. So once that 30 days has expired, the board then can vote on the second read and approve the school calendar. The work began on this calendar by Mr. Vogelmann with DPC on March 11th. He got input from the reps that were there as been the usual procedures that we've been doing with different groups and different tables. I think that's about it. After the 30 days is over, Mr. Vogelmann will be back or he'll submit to me if we're still meeting like this and just share any comments or feedback with the executive team and take that to the board for a final vote. I'm sorry.
What's DPC?
District Parent Council. Sorry. Educational jargon.
Now, are there more professional development days on here than we've had in the past?
I don't believe so. I think maybe we shifted them.
We shifted some only because I was in on those meetings. They shifted some. There's not more. They did some shifting, took some beginning of the year, added more at the beginning of the year and took some.
There was like, yeah, there was a conver, usually the Friday before Labor Day is a professional development day. And I believe then there's usually one more in either October or November. And there was a statement that they decided that they would rather have those before school started back in August. So they shifted those back to August.
Thank you.
It seems like more days.
Yeah.
I'm counting nine, but perhaps my count's not correct, but thank you.
Sure. Anybody else on this?
So this is not the upcoming year's?
No, it's a year from now.
The upcoming year's calendar is already been approved and on the website. Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you.
And we're going to move on to our guiding principles for reopening in the fall. You're going to hear me say this about 20 times. We want our kids back as much as we can. And so what you have, I think you all have a copy in front of you too. Can you turn anything on? If not, they have it.
They have. Turn around.
As well as I believe we're putting it on the Zoom so that people can see the presentation while you're talking to.
All right, thank you.
Turn around.
So just a couple of things to point out. This is something that the team has been working on, the executive team, in consultation with a lot of other people as well. And I'll get to sort of what our decision points are going to be down the road towards the end of the month. I'm hoping we get something from the governor's office on the 20th or, and/or ODE and/or any of the powers that be. But everything that we go back to starts with our mission and vision, and that's why both of those things are included here. And so when we look at what the plan's going to look like for considering and considerations for reopening our buildings, we look at four different buckets, if you will. The educational piece, first of all. And so we want to provide an in-person learning environment in front of our teachers as much as possible. What we've sort of in-house referred to as door number two is door number two would be a fully online virtual option for K-12 for any student that could not come back. And there are health reasons, there are family reasons, there are, there's just some safety issues too. And so we have teams of teachers now building that out that this won't just address or be now for COVID-19, but it'll continue on even hopefully when that gets past us as soon as possible. A backup plan would be if people start getting sick or we get shut down in the fall or winter, as some experts have been saying, then we have that remote plan virtually already built out better than what it was in the spring. Certainly because we had to flip a switch and go, but we'll have that as well as sort of a backup plan for another educational learning environment. We're going to continue under health and safety to follow the guidelines from our health department, both at the Butler County level and in Columbus. And also there's some social emotional components that some of the team members have been felt, have felt that their kids are missing out on. So that's obviously a concern for us, but I will say too, for staff, we need to make sure that we reengage them when we come back full-time. Hopefully in August, on August 14th as well. And then there are a lot of components under operations that I'll get to in just a second. For the third or fourth time in my presentation, we want our kids back in school as soon as possible. But we're waiting on those guidelines and guidance from Columbus, from our governor and from the health department. We also know that because of the current guidelines, we're going to have to work on space. And so I'm going to talk about that in just a second. What does that look like in the buildings? And then when we provide, I have some bullet points there that I've already mentioned about the virtual online option for our kids. We know that there's some parents are going to want their kids to learn at home, so we're going to provide that option as well. And I think that's important that we do that for some of those families. And I also think at, in some points, some homeschool parents might look that, at that as an option too. Maybe not so much this year, but in the coming years as well. We're also, if we have to pull back again, we'll pull back in the fall or winter if, if need be. For the health and safety considerations, we're again getting our guidance from the health department. The team actually went and looked at spaces in the district. We went to Van Gordon, took a field trip to Van Gordon and looked to see, based on the six-foot rule, how many students we can get into a classroom. And so I think very comfortably in following social distancing guidelines, that magic number is between 15 and 18 in a room, depending on the size of the room. We'd have to take some things out, but we did feel comfortable with that, with that number, 15 to 18 students included, and then a teacher on top of that. What we asked the principals to do in all of our buildings then was to take a look at what they thought was an average-sized classroom and what they thought was a smaller-sized classroom and see what their numbers are. So those numbers fluctuate. Some are less than 15, some are higher than 18, but essentially it came back to that sweet spot of between 15 and 18 in a classroom. I'll make a note, a mental note too, that Pennsylvania did a lot of this work already ahead of Ohio. And some of their guidelines state, and I'm paraphrasing the best I can, is social distancing six feet when possible or as, as much as possible. So there was a little bit of common sense maybe thrown into that where possible. So obviously we're not going to put 32 in a room, but you know, if you can fit 18 in, you're meeting social distancing and you get one more student, I don't think that's maybe a deal breaker, but we'll get to that with the health department when need be. So we're looking at all of those. We had our principals send us pictures of what the classroom structure would look like with 15 to 18. And for those of you that were at graduation, it was almost the same type of thing where the desks were like the checkerboard pattern where the cars were. You get more space that way than just having rows and then six feet and then rows. So we had them physically do that. We'd have to talk about what restroom procedures look like. We would have to close off our drinking fountains. This is again, under current guidelines. So that remains kids bringing water bottles and things like that. So that's another issue we'd have to deal with. For the clinic, we almost thought we would need two clinics, one for usual space. Thank you, Todd. Usual clinic procedures and then another clinic space for students that were showing symptoms of COVID-19 to separate them. So that's another space we're going to need for our kids. The transportation issue. So for transportation, right now, they still want that six-foot of distancing, which right now is still one student per seat, which would be 24 students on a bus. That's not good for us. That's not good for any district that I know of. And so when the transportation question came up, they get, when we're looking at who needs to be in school, obviously everybody does, but I think from a community aspect, our younger kids need to be at school. If we have to triage a group, I'm not sure that's the right word, but if we have to triage a group of students coming to school all day, every day, it probably needs to be K-6, K-7, K-8, because those kids can't stay home by themselves if mom and dad are at work. I think that's a consideration that the governor would say and educators get, I think, as well. So I don't want to have a dual system where it's K-6 are all in onboard and then it's a A-B day or something at the, at grade seven through 12 or nine through 12, but that might be something we have to look at. And bussing obviously weighs in on that decision. So if we had to go to state minimums, if we had to go to state minimums, then freshman bussing would be off the table because that's, that's not state minimum. But that would get us buses to get our younger kids to school. And so that's something that we have to take a look at in the next couple of weeks when we make a decision. But I mean, that's important. So I don't remember which board member talked about, you know, the new buses. I think it was Brad, but you know, that's something that we have to consider. If we can still only have one student per seat on a bus, that's, that's, that's huge for us. That's almost a non-starter for most of our kids.
Can I ask a very linear and possibly complex, maybe too, question? If we can only put 18 kids in a class, like is that the conversation around staggered schedules, kids coming over their day? Or is there staffing increases? What do you see?
So yes, yes to all that. If we, if 18.
So it's complex.
If the 18 is the magic number, we think we have enough spaces to turn common spaces in school as into learning spaces. So we don't have to move kids. We talked about at one point moving kids out of buildings of the, like, just pick a grade. Like sixth grade could move up or out or somewhere else and then we can space the kids. But we think we have enough common space in cafeterias, in gyms, and, and art and PE could be on carts and go to the classrooms. So you don't have kids touching stuff.
But we wouldn't have enough teachers to educate them all in the same day?
We might. Just being creative with, with specialists and other certified people. We might need some flexibility from ODE on licensure.
Okay.
But I think we can do it with most of the staff that we have on board.
Good answer.
It's not a good time to be adding staff if we're looking at a 10 to 20% cut.
Well, right. Right. And worst case scenario is they say no, and then we only can fit, say 15 in a room. And then you're going to have to have, it's looking to me a nightmare for, for parents. It could be a nightmare for school.
People won't get back to work.
People won't get back to work. Right. So the goal is, yeah, with current staff.
So Matt, even in some of the elementaries like Cherokee and Endeavor come to mind that are at capacity. We have enough common space in those buildings.
We're working, we're, we're working towards that.
Okay.
I'm also wondering about, like, we don't have desks. So like, in some of the rooms, we just have tables. So just.
We had the same conversation and flexible seating is not good for a pandemic. So we're, we're asking for lists from our principals about desks and tables and making sure you can still socially distance. There was one building that had a horde of desks still from maybe the 70s. I'm not sure.
Hoping that things would just cycle around.
Have, have been cycled around. So yeah, that's on our list.
Pulling out a storage and.
Mm-hmm. Did I say anything? Am I off base? Okay. Visitors would be nil. So they don't, I mean, this, again, this is under current structures. Books, devices and supplies, we would basically want kids to have their own things and not, no community items. So when I mentioned like an art room or a music room is just, you know, germ heaven, right? Because you have all these instruments and things that kids want to touch. So it would essentially be kids just need to have their own things. We would have to institute cleaning protocols for staff and for students. And what does that look like? You know, one ways in the hall, going around the building. And there would be safety training for everybody as well. Under the social emotional piece. Got it. Thanks. There we go. We're looking at five areas where we're building competency and want to, and that would be the self-awareness, self-management, responsible decision-making, relationship skills, which we're huge about and social awareness. We need to still make sure we're hitting some of those targets that we haven't been. And then if you see down below, each grade level still continuing the work that we started this past school year, PAX and K-2. All of our APs are doing two days of training starting tomorrow around social emotional learning and teaching. And then we have the, the screener, the brain health and HOPE squads for 912 still. And we have to get back to our usual business. Again, to the, to, I think, pretty much everybody's point around the table, we need to utilize our current budget and staff. So it's going to look a lot different than what it has been. And we're trying to keep the disruptions at the building to a minimum. So these constraints to open up school have sort of lessened a little bit. And it seems like we're getting more and more loose, if you will. I mean, sports are coming back. Kings Island's opening up. It just feels like that's the direction we're going to go in, we're, we're going towards. And I think we're going to see that at schools too. And so when it was really tight and things were really looking not great for reopening, we were concerned about having to move students out of buildings and redeploy, redistribute them. But I don't think that's going to be the case anymore.
Yeah, I think when we went on our field trip and actually went into a classroom and saw that we could fit 18 desks in that one classroom, I think that was eye-opening for us and opened up a whole new way of, of looking at this. Because before we had heard from other districts that it was only nine or 10 kids in a classroom, which was.
And some of those districts are Ohio School Facility Commission districts and those are 900 square, 900 square feet or 1,200 square feet. They were, they're smaller.
Smaller classrooms.
So if you hear other schools are saying their magic number is less than ours, that's because their rooms are smaller than ours. So. In terms of facilities, we're still following the guidelines. Some of this is starting to repeat itself. And the transportation piece will be huge because if we can only get 24 kids on a bus, that's going to, that would require us to go K-6 all day, every day, transport the younger kids, probably not transport freshmen. Because we need to get these little guys to school because I can't stay home by themselves. I can't say any clearer than that. I hope that's not the case. In terms of operations, and this is going to be huge, still providing lunch to our kids, but they would not be eating in the cafeteria. They'd be eating in their classroom. but they would not be eating in the cafeteria, they'd be eating in their classrooms. They'd have to go down and still get it and bring it back. But we've talked about, what does that look like? And then OHSAA has already opened up student activities and sports. So we're just, I'm not sure that those two things are syncing up very well. We know that our kids, our youngest kids, again, are, those parents need, in some ways, childcare. And that's not saying that's what we do, but that is part of, part of school. We want to get a plan to our families as soon as possible. I'm going to talk about that date in just a second. And then, you know, we did the thought exchange and had five thousand, almost five thousand hits, I think. And that was really telling for us and good feedback for our district. So the next steps, so we're waiting to get some guidance from the state. I want to bring the plan to you on June twenty-ninth for the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one school year. So that's what, two weeks, three weeks, two weeks?
Yeah.
Yeah. Again, subject to change. So a lot can happen in the short time between now and June twenty-ninth. And quite honestly, a lot can happen after that. Three weeks. Questions, comments, concerns, things I forgot, Jenny? Todd, things I forgot.
What about kids who get sick or are diagnosed and then have to be quarantined potentially for two weeks? Could they flip to the online school?
Yes. And we anticipate that happening.
And will have procedures as to what their requirements are? The Health Department will likely have procedures for what their requirements are of how soon they're allowed to come back?
Yeah, yeah. And we have a phone call this week. We being all the county superintendents with our health commissioner this week to hopefully get some of those answers. I'll tell you too, and you know what, we didn't even talk about graduation, but graduation went really well. And we did social distancing as much as we could for that. And, and our health commissioner was instrumental in making sure that happened. She worked with us, it took a while to get there, but when we finally got there, it was, I think, a success. I'll also give her props to that Lakota East is going to have the viewing for, for, for Mrs. Bunkenmeyer. And so she was really good about, I didn't think she would say yes to that, but she did. And so she just talked about one way in, one way out of the building and keep the line moving. And so there's some flexibility. And she said, you know, I feel a little bit bad that I'm telling you something now that I couldn't tell you before about graduation. So she understands too that things are loosening up, so to speak, my words, not hers. And so, you know, I told her, I said, you, you have your bosses that you're, you're adhering to. And so I get the sense from her that she'll work with us on plans for a reopening as full as possible. She's always been very receptive and really good about returning phone calls. And so hopefully, that, that's the case. But the sense I got from her when I talked to her Thursday or Friday of last week was things are going to open up for schools, so.
I have questions, comments, and a couple of requests as well. When you talked about triage and you talked about the priority being K through six, I would add to that priority also our children in special ed or IEPs or 504s receiving services.
Yep.
I think those are very difficult to provide when it's not in person.
Totally agree.
And they absolutely, I know we have a fairly significant portion of our population that need to be put in that, no matter what grade level they're in. I think they need to be considered as well.
Yeah, they are.
Additional cost? I was looking at Jenny when you said on the current budget, and I see her nodding her head very strongly, yes. So I'm looking forward to seeing how you're going to accomplish that when I read this. I think there are a lot of new pieces to that, that-
Yep.
When you talk about it, and we get a costing on that plan as well, to see if that's within the current budget.
Yes. And, and as you know, the biggest piece of this is staffing. So if, and like Matt said, you know, our ultimate goal is, and we believe we can do this with current staff, to, to not add more FTEs. So that, from what we're doing, what we're planning, we believe we can do, we can do that. If, if things change and get more restrictive than what they look right now, we're hoping they go the other way. But if they turn and go more restrictive, we can't guarantee that. But right now, as it looks, we believe that we can do this with the current number of not increasing FTEs. Full-time equivalency for staffing numbers.
I would say too, that if it gets more restrictive, we're probably talking remote. I mean, remote, more remote, if it gets more restrictive. I mean, there's no way of avoiding that issue.
In order not to add additional staffing, transportation cost and all the rest.
Yeah.
So if there'll be costing to go along with that plan, I would really appreciate seeing that too. Could we get that plan maybe on the Friday before so we have a chance to really look at it over the weekend? That would be really helpful. There's a lot, there's a lot that's going into this, so.
Yep.
I also wanted to make one other request and then just a comment. We had a little bit of conversation back and forth earlier about following directives and that kind of thing. So I would really appreciate an opinion from legal explaining if we're getting guidance versus directives versus this is what you have to do. I'd like to understand as a board what our leeway is within that and that different terminology that's being used. So if we could get some explanation behind that, I think it would be really helpful to all of us. And even a question around if we didn't accept state funding. I think that was raised as well. And what does that look like? As it is, we have a lot of strong emotions about it, a lot of strong opinions, but it would be nice to see where we sit on all that legally. And then finally, just one comment, and I'm sorry, but I can't avoid saying this. There's so much common sense that I'm, I'm somewhat struggling with. The whole, we're opening up sports, kids are going to be going to day camp together, they're going to be playing in their backyards together. I've already had parents saying, we're not socially distancing at all. And then we put them back in a classroom with social distancing and mask and all kinds of other things. And I am really honest to God, arm wrestling with where the common sense is in that. So I just needed to say that. I don't feel that much better about it, but I needed to say it anyway. Thank you for the detailing of the plan.
No problem. And I, I forgot, I neglected to mention too, what Judy's viewing on Friday, that masks are required per the Health Department. That was, if you want this to happen, you have to do this, so.
And it's a continuous line, correct?
It's supposed to move. And if anyone's going to get that line to keep moving, it's Rich Bryant.
Right. He and Deputy Doug.
What I'm hearing also from the budgeting perspective is you, part of that is the assumption that some people are going to be online. And that's one of the reasons how you're making the busing and working and everything else working with the numbers is that there are going to be some people who are choosing that online option. Because otherwise, you can't get everybody there. I mean, based on the survey results, you're thinking that that's what's going to happen, is that-
Well, and we've talked about, you know, the timeline for, you know, how do we get those total numbers for the virtual option? Who wants to take advantage of that? We know that there are going to be, you know, Linda brought up, our special needs population. There could be some students that, right now, no matter what we do in the fall, could come back and say their option, they're going to take the virtual option, no matter what we come out with in fall, and that's their family decision. So once we know those numbers, that will help us. So we also are working on a timeline to communicate with our parents and have those numbers back too. So we'll have a better idea of how many students want to take that. But I think they probably want to know, what's it going to look like in the fall?
And that's, that's what it is.
The thing is, we need to do a lot better job on the virtual option, quite frankly, from what I've heard from students, parents. Our, our remote learning was a bunch of busy work and assignments. And there's no, no, my son maybe had a couple of Zoom calls with one of his teachers. But it's, it's not even close to being the same level of education as, as being in the classroom, so.
Totally agree.
What does it cost to do it right? I don't know.
But we're building, we're building that out now. But to your point, ye- yes to all that, but you got to remember too, I know you know this, is we had to flip the switch and go.
Turn on a dime.
So I, I don't-
No, I, I think you did a great job under the circumstances.
Teachers did, but yeah.
But if we're going to offer that option as a, as a full-time thing-
Right.
Then we need to do it right.
Right. We, we have teams, we have teams now that are building that, teachers that are building that out now. We're working with Hilliard Schools on that too. And they started, I think, last week, maybe even the week before, on building that out. So yes, yes, I mean, you're right. It does have to look better than what it was in the spring. And that came out in the results of the thought exchange too.
Like anything, I mean, I think we often hear from the parents that are unhappy and not the ones that are happy. So I think making overgeneralizations that the whole thing was not that great isn't right as well. I mean, I can speak from personal experience. I know other people that had a phenomenal, for what it was worth, right? I mean, it was remote learning. It wasn't homeschooling and it wasn't virtual online schooling for remote learning. I think our teacher stepped up to the plate and did a phenomenal job. And I just want to make sure we're not casting generalizations on the entire school system. Whereas we do know there are probably pockets where it wasn't wonderful.
Matt, is there any, as you build a plan, and I'm sure this is adding one more cog in the wheel you'd rather not deal with, but is there a, a plan or if someone starts remotely then wants to come back into the building?
We had, we had that conversation, and I think I would, I would have a hard time saying no to that because someone's going to have a reason. And so we would provide essentially one path. Now we're really doing two, you know, we're doing the virtual and the in-person. I would have a hard time saying, no, you can't do that. But I know it messes with numbers.
Right.
But someone, you know.
It messes with class dynamics too.
It, it does, but you know, I'm not sure legally we could do that either.
We made a provision, yeah.
Yeah.
But I think we also should check with legal as well. I mean, if you start, if we say that we're not going to be educating students in the classroom in a physical environment for seven to twelve, but then we say we're going to allow this certain population of students be in the building-
Yeah.
-to be educated. Currently speaking, if, if a student that's on an IEP, because right now we don't provide transportation, it has to be written into the IEP. So then it, does that mean that we're going to have to rewrite all these IEPs to then reflect that they get in-school instruction? So I think that we have to take a step back and look at the ramifications of saying certain populations, if we exclude the rest, we'll be able to get that. I think it's just working with legal and understanding what we can and can't do. And then, again, understanding what we need to do and what cost is associated with then rewriting all the IEPs and everything. And I'm, I'm fully for, I mean, just to clarify, I would love to have those, I think their students need to be in our buildings. But I don't think it's as easy just saying that population could come into a physical building and nobody else can.
The, the other sort of wild card on some of this is preschool.
Correct.
And those guidelines, we've been spending a lot of time on preschool.
Oh, yeah.
A lot of moving parts. And we do agree on the whole, we should be in contact with legal. At one of our meetings, we actually had legal in the room with us while we were discussing and bouncing things off because, agreed, I'm, and there's-
I bet that was a fun meeting.
Yes.
It was, it was Erin, so it was like-
Yeah.
I think that would be helpful, I really do.
All right, any further comments, questions, concerns from Matt? Moving on to new business. Do I have any new business? Hearing none, moving on to treasures recommendations. We have two items for board approval, the approval of the board meeting minute, or the board minutes, and approval of monthly financial reports. Do I have a motion to approve items A and B?
So moved. I'll second.
Hearing no discussion. Jenny, would you please call roll?
Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Parnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Level?
Yes.
Thank you.
Moving on to superintendent's recommendations, we have two items to approve, personnel items and the second read of our board policies. Do I have a motion to approve items A and B?
So moved. Second.
Hearing no discussion. Jenny, would you please call roll?
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Parnell?
Yes.
Mr. Level?
Yes, sorry about that. I need to move my mic back, I think.
Mr. Level, before you go into public comments, if you just want to ask the Zoom audience to raise their hand if they have a question?
Oh.
So they know how to do it?
Yeah.
Okay, fantastic, yes. This brings us to the second public comment section of the evening. This is for any public comment, can be unrelated to the agenda. Just a reminder, you get three minutes and must state your name and your address. For those that are on Zoom, if you have a comment that you would like to share with the board, you can do that by raising your hand and we will allow you to speak.
There's a button for that.
We have one? Okay. All right, go ahead.
Hello, Julie O'Callahan, six-two-four-zero, Winding Creek Boulevard, Liberty Township, Ohio. Hello, everybody.
Hello.
Couple of questions, when Mr. Miller was doing his presentation, wondered if that presentation will be available online for the community to look at at some point. And my other question with that is, is I didn't hear any mention about like innovation hubs and media centers and like library books, what would happen with that? How that might work out for our kids? Thank you, and I want to say, great job on the graduation. It's been the talk of the town, so thank you for everybody.
Thank you, Julie, we appreciate that. Do we have any other public comment? Okay. Okay, so those were specific questions in case they couldn't, I don't know if they can hear. Okay, great.
I can-
Do you want to summarize?
Do you mind if I do?
No, go for it, you can address Julie's as well.
So a couple of things. One, to Mrs. O'Callahan, yes, we can post the presentation. Two, in terms of common spaces, that's just a hypothetical about art on a cart and music on a cart. But if we need space, we might need to do that. And that would also include innovation spaces and libraries for our kids too to bring back everybody at, at full strength. So the, all the spaces are going to be looked at. And so we'll have to figure out what that looks like. But again, we're a little bit ahead of ourselves in terms of what the restrictions are going to be in the fall. Did I hit everything?
Band and theater.
The band and the, the band and quarter.
How will those be handled?
To be determined, but it's on our, it's on our radar. So it'll be part of the June twenty-ninth plan.
And Adam, who, can you tell us who the question was? Emily Jackson.
She's a resident.
Yes, she is.
And then common items like the innovation hub items and books. It's my understanding right now that the guidelines are the kids can't use any shared items.
Correct, we wouldn't be sharing any of the library books or anything like that. Plus, we would need those spaces anyway. So it would look a lot different. And the rooms, to get that, that magic number of fifteen to eighteen, you're going to have a lot of things taken out of classrooms to, just, just to meet that requirement.
So we're looking at our literacy efforts and how to best go about that? Looking at our literacy access and how to best address that?
Always.
We can do book in the bag for everyone in that case, instead of just the younger ones.
Or through technology.
I mean, that's how it was done pretty much during remote learning, using apps that were provided with books. Any other public comments? Okay. Okay. Go ahead. Karen, Karen, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Go ahead.
Hi, Karen Fogel, nurse at Adena Elementary. There are many nurses in attendance tonight, including Lauren Brown, our nurse manager. Just wanted to let you know that we have been very busy attending webinars. I did attend the Children's Hospital of Philadelphia one that Matt had discussed as far as the Pennsylvania SNAP, which is our, our documentation company that we use for all of our documentation, had a big webinar as well. So just so you know, we have a Google Doc with lots and lots and lots of info and questions. And we are more than happy to be involved in any kind of discussion as far as reopening.
Karen, have you talked to the Health Commissioner?
Have not.
Okay. We'll probably-
I'm not sure if Lauren has.
I know she has.
Yeah.
Probably be part of the conversation moving forward too, when we talk to our Health Commissioner.
Could that Google Doc be shared with us?
I don't have a Google Doc.
She just referenced a Google Doc they have that addresses a lot of questions.
I'll ask to get it and see if it's worth sharing or not.
Okay.
Thank you. Karen, we appreciate your, the hard work you and your team are doing to help get our schools ready. Any other public comments? Okay, hearing, seeing, none, whatever it may be. We'll move on to closing comments for this evening. We'll go ahead and start with Mr. Parnell.
Nothing.
Mrs. Schaefer?
I know Mr. Level had a birthday, so I'd like to wish him a happy birthday. It was a big one. So
Still a baby.
And, yeah, um, again, it's, there's been a lot to reflect on in our world. I know my kids in my house that haven't been directly impacted nearly as much as many by the events of the world have still been hit pretty hard by everything and, and pretty impacted. And, and it's been hard for me as a parent to know what to say and to have some of the conversations about what's happening in the world and, and to find, to find the right words and, and to find what to say to support them and, and to support that, that we're not all here here and to find common ground for everybody. And so I hope that we can all get there. I'm thankful, you know, you know, it's even, we've had a lot of debate about, you know, the, the SROs in our schools. Like I, it is my personal belief that our SROs provide a tremendous value, and I think that they build excellent relationships. And I'm very thankful that they're here. And again, I know that not everyone shares that view right now, and, and that's okay too. But I'm very thankful for the work that they've done and, and the people that we've chosen and that we have in our schools. And it, it's hard to know how to navigate our world right now, but we'll keep having this dialogue and trying to find the right way. And, and as Linda said, listening as well to make sure that we, we find where we need to be. And I look forward to making sure that we're supporting, supporting everyone and finding our, our common ground of, of ways that we can do that and, and not be, not be in a polarized, polarized world. So that's all.
Thank you.
Congratulations to our graduates and their families. I know it was not the ending that many of them anticipated or wanted to have, but I think they handled it well and with grace. And I'm really proud of all of them and glad we were able to do what we did for them. I think that was a really long couple of days, but it was, it was really a nice moment. And Lakota stepped up to the plate. So I was happy to see that. There's a lot of decisions to be made, a lot of thinking that needs to be done. And I would just ask that we are all open in this circle to thinking about diverse points of view, because I think we'll probably end up in very different places on our thoughts. And I look forward to a robust discussion on the plan at the next meeting. And I want to say thank you to our community and those, those that are providing feedback on any side of any of these issues, that they're talking to us, they're communicating and making that effort so that we have informed decision-making. That's it.
I just want to reiterate, graduation was amazing. So thank you to Matt and your team, and Betsy and her team, and both Mr. Carter and Mrs. Davis. Like Linda said, it wasn't the ending that they wanted, or they thought they were going to get, but everybody seemed to be pleased. And it was a long two days, but it was kind of nice to see how the excitement that they had, just being able to be there six feet apart with some of their friends. So thank you, everyone that participated in that. And I would also just like to give a personal shout out and sympathy to the Buckenmeyers. It's a personal story for me. I've known Judy for more than 20 years. Our daughters played softball from second grade through high school together. She was one of a kind, and she will be missed.
So I know we started under your section, under your comments, to talk about what's going on in the, the world today. And when Julie talks about her children in her home, and I, I have young adults, and so it has been a topic of, of conversation in my house as well. You know, and I've, I've been told, and I believe, if you say nothing, if you stay silent, then you're part of the problem. I, I do believe racism is still a problem in our country. And I am committed to be your partner in this journey, just like we're partners with all other things. And, you know, I think we stick with the things we know. I, I have not experienced racism. It's not part of my story. Poverty is, and so I can speak to that. And I have and will continue to. I also believe in advocacy, and I believe that there are many ways of impacting change. I've been active and continue to be, will continue to be active in advocacy on the local state levels. So I just wanted to say that. I know I was quiet during the first part of the meeting, but it doesn't mean that, that I'm not aware and I'm not committed to do better myself and to do what's necessary for the students in our school system to do better for them. So that's it.
Thank you. Matt?
On the, on the race thing, I could not have said it better myself. So thank you for that. And I'll leave it, I'll leave that one there for now. You know, on Judy's passing, and just a really quick story, I used to be superintendent in a small district called Salina, about two hours north. And when she passed, I had two teachers from there who had her as their cooperating teacher when they were student teaching up in Swanton in Toledo. Two separate, that reached out and wanted to just give the condolences to the district and how, even, even those two that just talked about how great she was back in Swanton 20 something years ago. And then just graduation went really well, thanks to the board for their support and to the community for rallying those efforts. And then Elgin, Susanna, Betsy, Rob Vogelman, that group just really got it done. So, and the weather, we just, you know, dialed it up perfectly.
We lucked out on the weather.
We lucked out. This past weekend would not have been so nice.
Right. I thought about that. It was so hot this weekend.
That's it.
Yeah, I just want to echo, graduation was phenomenal. And I think that for all of us, you know, it, it can get really easy to be separated from the success stories that occur every single day, right? Because you get into the board work and you get into the higher level stuff. And obviously, we hear from a lot of community members, and the most of those community members aren't necessarily sharing the most positive things that are happening within the system. You get them, but I would say the majority, at least I receive, are the things that they want to share that maybe could be improved upon. But I just had that moment, every time that I stand at graduation and we see the hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of students that have gone through Lakota, that are grabbing their diplomas and to then look out. And I think the coolest thing about this graduation was that you could look out and you could see the graduates with their families. And you could see the pride. Like I, like it was such an emotional two days, because that's the work right there, right? Like we talk about preparing our students for the future and to whatever that future may be for them. And to actually see them go through that process, it's phenomenal. So I know that our, the virtual graduations going out soon.
Wednesday and Thursday?
Wednesday and Thursday.
I just encourage our community, if you get, get time, I know it'll probably be long, but just take a moment and just even if you watch five to 10 minutes of that, there's, there's no better pride in our community and what we've done as a team than to watch those kids walk across the stage. And every kid has a story, every number has a, every num, every name is a number and it has a story, right? Like, and so the reality is, they've had this journey, and we've been to be, we have been a part of that journey. So it's pretty cool. All right. So at this point, we're going to, I need a motion to enter into executive session to consider the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, and compensation of public employee or official and discuss matters related to a regulated individual. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Hey Jenny?
Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Parnell?
Yes.
Mr. Level?
Yes. We will not have any further board business upon returning from executive session.
Other than adjournment.
Other than adjournment.